This is Walter Capps of the Independence News Report Live. The City Council meeting today, August 14, 2023. Looks like today we are talking about the Ethics Ordinance and discussing the proposed changes to the City Council Rules of Procedure. Looks like we got here Article 16 Code of Ethics, Division 1 Declaration of Policy, Section 1.16.001 Statement of Purpose, Section 1.16.002 Definitions, Division 2 Current City Officials and Employees, so Section 1.16.003 Conflicts of Interest, Section 1.16.004 Unfair Advances of Private Interests. Alright, the meeting should start any second now. There is Bridgette McCandless, she represents my district. There is Bryce Stewart. He's in District 2. My district is District at Large. I don't know what that means, but there's two at larges. Bloody hell. Got my water and I'm ready to go. Don't need to fall over, it's gonna get annoying. They're rolling, walk it in. And that is, there's their, I believe, Perkins. Here comes Covert, walking in. Where's the call? There is Michael Steymeyer. I like him. We are missing Perkins, and that was Pierce, okay. Perkins gonna be here via Zoom or? Someone else will come in via Zoom?
This may be a very long meeting and I don't know how long your phone will last, but we do record these on YouTube.
Yeah, I know.
I just wanted to make sure you have that.
Don't worry, I got a pretty good size SD card.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And there's Mr. Perkins. And we got both city managers here. This one over there too.
Alright, let's get this study session started. Capps, please call the roll.
Pierce.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Hamlin.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Make a run, listen.
Here.
Notification for their YouTube just popped on my phone. Make sure I do not disturb her. There you go.
So we've got the Ethics Ordinance and the Rules of Procedure with the group. Want to continue with the agenda as is proposed, or do you want to go to Rules of Procedures first? What's people's thoughts? No objection. We'll continue as we have it on the agenda then. The Ethics Ordinance discussion. Mr. Covert, if I may ask you, we have a document in front of us with some redlining.
Yes, sir.
Could you elaborate on how you came to that, where we have that?
Yes, sir. Okay, so the, it says submitted on May 30, 2023, that was from the Mayor's Commission on Ethics Reform. That's where, that's the version we're operating off of, was what, you know, their final version submitted to you all. So throughout this document, there's two different types of edits essentially. One is actual red line that's in the document. Those are law department suggested edits that had previously been made when this was a working document with the Commission on Ethics Reform that they chose not to adopt, which was therefore active. So, because you all asked for suggestions and edits, that's what that is, which is those are coming from the law department. Those are not coming from any one council member. And again, all of these have been made previously, but the Ethics Commission, you know, had other ideas, so they weren't adopted, but we're making them again to you all, and those cover a variety of definitions. So that is the actual, the red line in the document is coming from the law department. Separately, there are comments throughout the document. We received feedback from Councilmember McCandless and Mayor Rowland, and so those comments and questions are incorporated as comments throughout the document. So there are no changes that they're asking about or suggesting in the red line. The red line is just the law department, and I think there may be a couple of explanation comments that are coming from the law department too. But each one of the comments, in fact, if there is no, if it doesn't say, McCandless or Rowland, is coming from the law department. The ones that are coming from them have their name on them, that way we could, you know, all be on the same page. So the red line itself is from the law department, comments are either from McCandless, Rowland, or if it doesn't say, those are also the law department. And these only changes made, that again, either we had previously suggested, or that came from those two members.
And just to make it clear to everyone, Robbers' Order still applies. You can make amendments all the way up to the time of second read. We're just trying to do this from a standpoint of process and a bit along, but through your respect to everyone, it will be a scenario where we, everyone can still make comments, so don't feel like the deadline has been met and going from there. I'm just, from a process standpoint, I was just gonna go through and look at red item items unless you had anything else to say, but look at red line items today and go through those one by one, or would you prefer to go by section by section? What's the preference of the body?
I think it could be more efficient use of our time to go through kind of section by section, which is, you know, anybody has a comment that... Because I've got, my comments are on my computer screen, so, you know.
Is that, and will everyone just, we don't need a vote for that, we just take consensus? Yep, so I'm going to, before we go to section one, I just got a couple of things here. Mr. Covert, if I could ask, Section 116.039, you changed hearing rules to hearings procedure. Was that a legal change there?
It's, I mean, we just thought procedure was a more appropriate word.
Okay. And rather than saying handling, I feel this complaint, she's just making that for those complaints?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the Code of Ethics establishes a standard of conduct disclosure requirements, and it took out enforcement mechanisms. Can you expand upon that, if you would, please?
Sure, so one of the, I'll say, the areas that, that, really the main area where my staff wasn't really on the same page with the Commission on Ethics Reform was on enforcement. And what could actually, if there's, you know, a violation of this, what could actually be done? And so the, and, you know, we had suggested certain changes that really made that, you know, in fact, if something were to be violated, that would go through, you know, a judicial court process, which we believe is appropriate. The Commission on Ethics Reform had a, you know, had more in mind that this, you know, Board of Ethics would handle itself these kind of complaints and be able to impose fines and punishments and that sort of thing. We didn't think that that was consistent with the charter. And so that's why throughout the main substantive change or suggested edit that you'll see from my staff relates to enforcement and what the powers of the Board of Ethics are. And again, that's because, you know, it's not a personal opinion, we believe that that's limited by Detroit or to some of the state statutes, and so we've made certain suggested edits based on that. You see that a number of different times.
Thank you. So going section by section, we've got the definition section, we've got some highlights. How about if we go through, I'll go to the highlights and come back to anybody who's got comments. Does that work? Alright, so on page three, there was no highlights or any items on that on 116.002. So going to page four, the first comment was from Councilmember McCandless, public announcement. And Councilmember McCandless on section, on page four, section three there, you added public announcement. Do you want to get some thoughts on that?
Sure, so this is subsection G, I agree, the making of a public, excuse me, the making of a public announcement of indefinite intent to run for public office in a particular life, regardless of whether the specific office is mentioned in the announcement. So I'm just trying to understand the definition of public. So is that in a meeting with several people? Is that something in writing? Is that, I'm talking to my neighbor across the fence, what is a public announcement?
Well, let me just say again, in the end, all of the words, you know, this is crafted by the Commission on Ethics Reform, so I'm not gonna, I can't speculate as to exactly what they had in mind. I understand your question, I mean, again, there's certainly some ambiguity in there. I think it, in order to make it, I think it would be appropriate to make it more clear as to what constitutes a public announcement, or an alternative might be an official announcement, whereas it has to be something, you know, coming from, you know, a campaign, you know, something more than just, hey, I talked to the guy, he said he was looking at running, you know, for office or something like that. So again, I'm not saying that that in itself, you still couldn't have ambiguity within, you know, an official announcement, unless you, you know, get clarified that further to say, an official announcement from, you know, an established campaign committee or something like that, you know, might do it. If you're trying to be more clear, that mayor may not address their intent here. I can't speak to that.
Thank you. I would be willing to substitute the word official for the word public.
And then, go ahead, Walter, I'm sorry.
But what's official?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, we're at the same, we're the same place, because this is what I'm thinking as we were talking, and I don't mean to interrupt anyone, but an official announcement would be an MEC filing, social media post, you know, official announcements, those kinds, you know, things that are posted and access to the public, where I think give a better definition, but Councilmember Hobart, you're an attorney, and Mr. Covert, you're an attorney, so what would be a better definition in your mind?
Official, official connotates some level of formality or some regulation. You know, public connotates some availability to more than just a subset of people. You know, you could generalize it and just say announcement. Or you could further define it as in making it known to more than two people. If you wanted to be that, might do about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please proceed, if I can, in check, so. For current office holders, we have to file the continuing active committee report every three months, so having MEC files doesn't necessarily mean that you are going to be running again. I would say to set the stage, the fact that a person pulls and sets a packet, pulls a packet, will be the public announcement that they are running. I think that would be the most clear way to define someone.
Okay, pulls a packet. I will tell you, I have, I think there needs to be more than that, and the reason I say that is, and I don't know if you included this in it, Mr. Covert, Section 115 from the Missouri statutes with regards to people who are made, attempt to file and don't file for their office, and then pull off at the last minute. And so it might need something more than that happen, work on this, so this is the frame of it. There was a congressperson who ran for Congress in the state of Missouri, probably 30 years ago. Did not make any statement at all that they were not going to rerun, went to file, they had already, they went and filed in Jeff City. On the final day of filing, about 4 o'clock in the afternoon before they closed the filing at 5 o'clock, this congressperson withdrew their nomination, and then I won't want to detail some of it, you could have figured it out, but another person they're choosing filed, and it ended up being that that person, in fact, got elected to office because that person withdrew, and then they only gave it an hour's worth of notice to the public to do that. So with that as a frame, in regards to the question that Mr. Covert and I've talked about, if someone did that as a city, how would protect the public's interest if somebody withdrew at the last minute? Would the intent have been somebody else be in their spot?
I mean...
Go ahead.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor, but the problem is, that's perfectly legal. You know, if you're relying on somebody else's behavior to determine whether or not you're gonna run for public office, that's your own business, you know. You have a duty if you want to run for public office, to file and run for public office.
Right.
You know, if you want, if you're up against a candidate that plays games, I mean, that sort of is what it is. I mean, they, there was a story recently of the candidate in Florida that had a, they did it several times down there, actually, that had a similar name to their opponent, so that they tried to get people to vote for the wrong person. I get what you're trying to prevent, and I get what the committee's trying to prevent, but part of, part of it is the gamesmanship of it.
Yeah, okay.
It's not...
Can I interject something here quickly, or not to interrupt you?
No, no.
But state law already, because of that event, state law already makes accommodations for that.
Right.
So it says, if I'm correct, Mr. Covert, is if that situation were to occur, they open the filing for two days now, so that somebody could go down there and file, but of course, they don't have the signature requirements that we have. So would we allow them two days to file, and then allow them more time to file the extension of the signatures? This is, I think, a question of this body, so that we could in fact follow state law, which is, in fact, what I'm hearing you say is, if it's in state law, follow it.
I wouldn't have any objection if there are similar situations to, and it's legal under our charter, if there are similar games that are played, I wouldn't have any objection to making similar accommodation. I really wouldn't.
Yeah, mainly that's the thought process I've gone through, and I just want to clarify that, so thank you, but you make a great point. I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, but I wouldn't, if people do that, and it's certainly, if it's, definitely, if it's a state law.
Right, I mean, state law has addressed it, so. Sure, and I would just like us to basically have that as a provision in here, and for that question ultimately, is it better here, or is it the charter, or where's the best place for that, kind of vision?
Well, right, and I understand what your goal is, but I would agree with part of what you just said. I don't think this is the correct place to address that issue, because that's going to have other ramifications that relate to filing deadlines and other sorts of things that are already addressed in the charter, and that's what we're trying to figure out, is, you know, with charter review, where that idea can be worked in. So I understand what your goal is there, but I don't think that there's a way to do it with the current charter, and I don't think, you know, this is the right place for it. So I understand your goal, and we're working on that, I just, I don't think that really works in this document.
Right, I think this body's asking you to come up with, you know, come up with an official announcement definition that's greater than just official, because we've got definitions towards the front of the document, and that would fit in there as I... Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you, and I would also, just as we're beginning this deep dive, looking at these pages, that, one, we're not a city, two, we are not here to try to knock away every ask for it that's coming out of the sun.
Good point.
And for the universe to hit independence, so with that in mind, I think it would be, stay with the document, go forward.
Yeah, perfect, great suggestion, thank you. Alright, then with that suggestion, I'll move on to Chaddles, Councilmember McCandless.
I'm sorry, I just need to clarify, so are we leaving this section as is?
I still come back to, if you say official, it gives the context that this isn't, I'm just having coffee with my neighbor in a public space, and that's a public announcement. People can define official however they wish, at least that gets a little more clarity around the intent of number three.
Okay. Do you feel like you're clear, Mr. Covert?
Yes, I mean, I'm not asking, you know, again, in the end, if you all want to do or vote on, I'm based on the conversations, I'm gonna be making edits to this document before it comes back to you. So in the end, if there's something that, you know, you feel like that maybe the consensus isn't as clear, then please let me know. And obviously, in the end, you're gonna get a chance to vote on it either way, and you can still bifurcate it out at that point too, but yes, that's good enough for me for now, thank you.
But I would, I would suspend upon official, so that's more clear, and I would agree with Councilmember McCandless on that. Section O, page four, Councilmember McCandless, proceed.
So this is definition O of economic interests, and they used a term that is not common. And so for people to be reading this to understand, can we use a different term than channels? Which is, I would have to say, not a common term.
Doesn't channels have a legal definition?
It does have a legal definition, I don't, it does have a legal definition. It essentially relates to personal property, if that's, you know, a term you all be more comfortable with, then we can substitute that out. Personal property, okay.
Thank you.
Then going to page five, gift. And Councilmember McCandless, I have number seven, please proceed.
So this is definition S of a gift, a voluntary transfer of property or the conferral of a benefit having pecuniary value. So a gift of a pen that I buy at Walmart for $1.20, not likely to sway the behavior of anyone. I'm just wondering if we can insert the word de minimis in there, de minimis pecuniary value, so that, you know, it's common sense that something, if I go speak at Rotary and they give me the $3 mug, that is not a violation of the ethics rules, that's just a common courtesy of a gift that's given that's of minimal value.
Mr. Mayor? Please proceed.
Since we're going with plain language, we probably should just either put a dollar value or just say minimal. So maybe $5 or less or something. I would suggest saying anything of, with $5 or less monetary value, I would suggest make it very specific.
But we could do minimal, because the committee, the Ethics Committee would decide if there's actually a proceed, and if they feel like this is frivolous, then they just throw it out, you know what I mean? I don't know, I don't think we want to go that far.
That's, I would be fine with minimal too, but just, you know.
Let's make it $10, so that nobody has to argue about whether this is, you know, that's a small enough value that...
Sure, that's where I was, that's where I was, make it $10.
No objections, $10 it is. Item V, Councilmember McCandless, on page five, please proceed.
So this is definition V of notice. I read this actual notice by the recipient, shall be conclusive of notice received. It shouldn't be actual notice by the sender, shall be conclusive of notice received. Or is it acknowledgement of notice by the recipient? It's confusing.
I agree. I think the, it's correct about the recipient, because we don't need a notice up. The only one that needs notice is the recipient. I believe that part is correct. I think...
Wait a minute.
I'm trying to work this back.
Are we doing, is this...
Is the definition section where the...
This is, but this is for notice to council people, or for elected officials, or for candidates?
Or by the ethics board to...
Anybody? Shouldn't we all have mailing addresses? This gives me the willies a little bit. I'm too used to written mail notice.
We can suspend... We can suspend this and wait for you to bring a recommendation for clarity of language later, I just wanted to highlight it is inherent confusion.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out if we even need that last sentence at all.
Well, I, I would agree with, with both of you, that the last sentence is confusing, so I, I think it's, it may not be necessary. It's up to you all, again, we, we, when, as we were working through this, we made suggested edits to the extent we thought they were inconsistent with state statute or, or the charter. So to the extent you all don't feel like the, the notice itself, the types of notice are sufficient, that's, that's up to you all, and that's not something, you know, that, so I, I understand where Councilman Hopeart's coming from, because that's, you know, a different level than what we typically think of for, for legal service. So we can definitely, let me, let me analyze that last sentence, and I would say it's up to you all whether or not the, the forms of service are appropriate.
But if you do this, if you come back for a recommendation, and we can discuss the issue with some more clarity then, does that sound fair, Mr. Culver?
Yes, sir.
Does that help, Councilmember?
Thank you.
Then it takes us to page six. Any, any other discussions, any other items, I don't want to cut anybody off or stop anybody if they have. So the first thing that we see on the general document is general rules, you've taken general rules out.
So I have a question on this whole section, this, this part right in here, I don't like.
Which one? Go ahead.
I know in A, one, for example, my question is, is, you know, shall not take any action, official action, as life may affect the economic interests of official or employee, I guess the question is, is, you know, if I have a, you know, a child that has rental property, does that mean I can't take a vote on rental ready? I mean, that, that seems, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand the level of, you know, at what point I need to, under this, the way it's written, under what point I would need to abstain, or, you know, on, on a different, a specific topic, or, that's just confusing.
I, I mean, so to answer the question, generally, outside of the definition here, I would say, no, if you had a situation where you or a child or anyone, well, you know, had a, had a rental property, and you were talking about, you know, a vote on that affects zoning regulations for all, you know, multifamily property or something like that, no, that's not, that, that in and of itself is not a conflict. Whether or not it, you know, this document raises a higher bar, I, I can't say.
Or, or here's another, I mean, a similar kind of scenario, you know, if I'm, if we're, if we're voting to, say, decrease, decrease, you know, utility rates, well, in that case, that would affect all of us economically.
Sure, what I would say generally, outside of this, is that any, any decision or vote that affects an entire group of people, that you happen to be a part of, okay, isn't a conflict, so utility rates, zoning, something like that, as, the difference would be, you know, as opposed to voting on, to rezone a specific property that you own, right, that, that's a, a vote that would just be, that, that only benefits you. As long as it, it, you know, benefits a group, and you happen to be a part of that group, I don't consider that a conflict. No, again, if you all think this document is strict on that.
That's why I'm trying to interpret this, and maybe that's, maybe that's a frivolous interpretation, frankly, but I'm just saying, you know, I, I want to make sure I understand, because, you know, because we are called to make those kind of decisions that affect a group, so maybe we need to put some language in there to that effect, that's why I'm asking.
What I was thinking of doing in each section, Mr. Culver, I, now I gave you a number of notes, and that's what I did during this section, is a plain English example, a conflict of interest would be not voting on changing rates for all city users of utility, because it impacts all of us. But if you were to make a decision that impacts just you or a family member, that's where conflict interest would be, or if you change the code to, to just impact a family member, you need to recuse yourself from that decision. But if you're just doing the zoning of an area that doesn't include those folks, you see what I'm saying?
So my, my thought was, well, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
On the, number seven, same section. An entity for which a city official or employee serves as an official or director, or in any other decision or policymaking position. What about if we have someone who works for the city that sits on, let's say, the board of the chamber? That could be a problem. Or any other board, or, like, matter, innovation center, we have people that sit on it, this could be considered a conflict of interest.
So, I, I, and I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to keep, keep track of, make the best I can, on, on, A, where we're talking about the, the rule, the, the category that we're in right now.
Yeah.
So it currently says, a city official or employee shall not take any official action that is likely to affect the economic interests of, and then it lists, you know, a number of different individuals. What if we added exclusively into that wording, so it would say, a city official or employee shall not take any official action that is likely to exclusively affect the economic interests of any of those people, would that satisfy your concern?
Yeah, I move that satisfies my concern.
Okay, so that, that, that way, it addresses the situation where if it's, that's, that person isn't within, within a group of people, that you have to make a decision about whether that's you or whoever, then that doesn't matter, it's only when you're looking at just that person, so, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So I'm going to be the contrarian, and I am the voter, and I say Jared owns, sorry, Jared, Jared owns three car lots, and a resolution comes up that limits the city to only having three car lots, and Jared votes in favor of that, that feels like self-dealing. While understanding that it affects all the car lots in the entire city, you can see the public perception is that that's self-dealing. Or I own a hundred apartment complexes, and I vote to rescind the rental ready, because I don't like it, and all of the other apartment owners don't like having to keep their properties up to a certain standard, you can see where that's going to feel like self-dealing from the public's perspective. So I understand thoroughly the intent of this statement, and I, I think in many ways we should really be thoughtful to err on the side of appearance of conflict, even if it affects a group of people, because I'm within that group of people. Now, the utility one is particularly difficult, because there's no way out of that, everyone has to use these utilities, we all have to live in the city, so by definition, we're all caught in that, and perhaps that is its own exception, but I, I do understand the reasoning for the Ethics Committee to put this in, thank you.
Well, I think you, you sort of hit on it, I mean, the difference between an actual conflict and the appearance of conflict, and, and there's no, I would say there's, there's no way for this document to, to contemplate every possible scenario. So I, I think that what's, what's most appropriate is that you all address, to the best we can, actual conflicts that, that we can identify. To the extent, the, the examples you gave, you know, create an appearance of conflict, then certainly if it, you know, if someone, or, or if there is some debate as to whether is that a conflict, a true conflict, or just the appearance, then, you know, I think that's what this, you know, the Board of Ethics and other avenues are going to be there for, to address those situations. I, I think it would be difficult to go beyond that we're not just regulating not just conflicts, but something that anyone might think is a conflict, because obviously that's going to vary from person to person.
Can I, can I just challenge you on that? I mean, the, one of the cornerstones of ethics is not just the, the, the conflict itself, but we're, we're to try to, to prevent ourselves from even the appearance of it, because our job is pretty simple, if we're, we're to ensure that all citizens are treated equally, right, and so we can't even give that appearance that, that by voting for something that, that looks, in, as, in that example, as, has an appearance that we're, we're taking advantage of a position, and we have failed even that cornerstone of ethics, I think. I think you can't, I, I know what you're saying, you can't, you can't safeguard everything, but we do have to address the issue of appearance, I think, we have to be willing to flee from that type of, of look.
Let me be clear, again, thi- this document isn't mine, so I'm not, none of this, I don't take any of this personally, and this is, you know, we, this is coming from the Ethics Commission, obviously with, you know, suggestions and, and edits from the Law Department, but this isn't my document, in the end, it's got to be your document, so it's, it's up to you all how, how strict you all want to be.
And that's, and that's part of my concern with this thick document here, is that in many places, it gives that appearance that there's, that, that we have ethical issues or that we, I think this, I think sometimes simplest is keep with this, and I, because I think we're trying, I'm just, it's a minutia of stuff we're, we're already moving through, and I don't know that our citizens will get all this, honestly. And that's my concern, I, I think, I know, I, when I, when I was at university, when we, when I went through an ethics course, it wasn't this hard, so that's my two cents, we'll continue moving forward, but if, if it, if there's an appearance of a conflict or an issue, then that, to me, that, that needs to be discussed, we have to figure out a way to make sure that we're, that we don't look like we're giving either ourselves or people that we're connected to an edge in this community, that's not what we do.
Councilmember, I agree with your statement regarding the appearance of conflict, and I know, Mr. Culver, you can talk to this in some detail, but you've had situations from board members who felt like they had a conflict, let's say in the Parks Board, just for example, they would then send you an email, I think via the, the city manager to say, hey, I'm, I'm involved with this, we're going to make this decision, we're going to make this recommendation, am I in conflict? And that's how they've handled it there, would you, like, Mr. Councilmember Steinmer, would that be something suffice to make a recommendation in the document if you do feel that there's an appearance of conflict, and it might be issues, to check it out with Mr. Culver before he proceed, would that be fair, or would, how would you like to do that?
Well, I think, I think if we, if we need to put it in writing, absolutely, I think oftentimes, people, they, they sense that, that maybe in their particular situation, that it could be a conflict, and clarifying it up is good, I, I think that's, that's the kind of ethics that I think that we all carry, or we should, to do the right thing, so yes, if, if that makes people feel better than if it's, if there is a question of appearance of wrongdoing or ethical violation, yes, they need to get that, an opinion on it, to prevent them, because there's some punishment stuff in here that people need to be aware of too, so, yeah, I think we better, as much as possible, keep people safe in their function.
So, to, I'm going to try to paraphrase what I heard you saying, Councilmember, did you want to make it simpler and clearer, and so if we could add a section, and there, Mr. Culver, that would say something affecting, please correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember, is to say, if you are an elected official or a board member, and you feel that there may in fact be a conflict of interest, please run by the city council member or the city councilor in order to get a, an opinion on a particular item that's coming forward before you make the decision. Would that be fair, or what do you think?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Mayor, but, but again, I think they almost have to, because of some of the issues of, of how, how violations of this are handled.
Sure.
You almost have to do, cover everything.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So later on in the document, that remedy is provided for, that you can ask the Board of Ethics for an opinion, but we should add that substitute in for legal counsel?
Yep.
Because it may not be reasonable to convene an entire Board of Ethics for a simple question that we feel like our counsel can answer for us.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, what I, what I'll need to do is make sure that there's nothing inconsistent in the rest of the document with that idea, so I, I understand what you're after, so we'll, I'll see what I can do and make sure we deal with it more better.
As an attorney, you're going, if you do this, there may be unintended consequences.
Right, without, without, yes, that's correct, so I just got to, that's why I can't, I can't commit to any one answer at the moment.
Absolutely, and I can, and that's why Harry Truman always wanted one economist, so that they couldn't say on the other hand.
There you go.
Go back to 003, you recommended the word exclusively, I wanted it maybe clearer to say directly, to, to directly affect the economic interest, that might help bridge this car lot scenario.
Yes, that's, that's a, I mean, sure.
I'm just, I'm just thinking it out here, I had, I had that in my notes before you came up with exclusively, so I didn't mention that.
But I like the word directly, anyone else?
I would say directly is more broad than exclusively, so if the idea is to, well, in this, because, because you could have something that directly affects you, but also affects other people. If it exclusively affects you, then it only affects one person, so I, again, this is, these are your edits, so I'm just trying to do what you want, so I, but it's.
Let's, let's go with exclusively, and then we can always ask for an opinion?
Sure, okay.
Okay. Anyone else? And then, that takes us to page eight, section 116 and 004, general rule was removed.
Can I back up?
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry.
Page seven, item number seven, on, you know, any entity for which city officials and employees serve as an official or director, or any other decision or policymaking position. Would it, from your perspective, that that would include if you're on a board of a nonprofit or something to that effect?
Because that was the point Councilmember Steinmer was making, and.
Right.
It's a good point, because actually many of us end up serving on lots of city-related boards, we all do right now.
Well, city or, or non-city.
Right, well, nonprofits.
Yeah, nonprofits or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's a potential issue, yes.
So, I mean, one item of clarity could be to say, any entity defining or setting exclusive of those related to city activities or city appointments, that would take, you know, the, the city appointment to the chamber or to the IDEC or those things off of the list. I personally think that if I am on the Board of Directors of CSL and Independence Together comes up for a vote, I can't vote on that, because I am an affiliate of that organization, it is my obligation to refuse.
Well, for example, you're on the Truman Library Board.
Correct.
So can you vote on anything else related to independent tourism? Or is it a competitor, or is it, is it complimentary or a competitor?
If it's something directly tied to the Truman Library, a transfer of land to the Truman Library, or a grant to the Truman Library, I have to refuse, because I am.
Sure, sure.
I don't think, I don't think it's as broad as tourism.
Right.
But it says economic interest.
That's all.
So, the definition, the, the problem is in the, in the broad definition though. And a good lawyer can easily make that case. Therein lies the problem.
Right. So, Mr. Councilmember Culver, are you good with Councilmembers McCandless recommending the suggestion to, uh, to clarify that?
On number seven?
Please, yes.
Tell me again where, what...
So, we, we read, "An entity for which the city official or employee serves as an official or director or in any other decision or policy, policymaking position, with the exception of those where, uh, that participation is at the direction of the city or an appointment by the city. That would exclude that, you know, that small piece of it."
What I had, based on those comments, was adding, "For any non-city-appointed positions." So, the idea, if this is what you all are after, is if it's a, if it's something where you're serving essentially through your official capacity, so you're appointed to the board, you know, as, as, as a council member or any, for, for any other position, then that wouldn't count. If it was, as, uh, Councilmember McCandless said, sort of an independent position, then yes, that, under this, under these guidelines, that would create conflict if it was something, any, any outside of a city appointment.
So, I'm gonna come back to, to Councilmember Culver's admission. So, I'm on the Truman Library Board, and we approve the tourism budget. And that is to promote all aspects within the city. Your concern is that is a monetary benefit to the Truman Library because it is broad enough that they would be encompassed in the group. Is that my understanding?
It's an example.
Sure.
I personally have no concern whatsoever. I believe that all tourism dollars, any tourism dollar spent in the benefits of the fund. So, just so we're clear, I was using an example. I believe there's no issue at all, Councilmember McCandless. I wanna be very, very clear.
I, I'm trying.
Yes, as far as the definition goes, yes, absolutely, there's an issue. Because the definitions are so broad. There is absolutely an issue. Yes. Uh, if, if, if there, if you sit on a board that promotes one theoretically, uh, one tourism item over another theoretically, potentially providing, uh, a bias in economic opportunity for one over another, and is there conflicts on your, your potential? And are you then violating fiduciary duty you hold over and over another potential?
Do you see a remedy for this, Councilmember Culver?
Uh, narrowing the definitions or removing them from big conflicts of interest.
So, on number seven, do you have a recommendation, how you, how you restate that?
Uh, for number seven, the, it's simple. Uh, the, the solution is what Mr. Culver recommended, which is if you hold a position that's directly related to your city position, then it's included. If it's something, for example, now I work at Blue Ridge Bank. If I end up appointed to a board there or through that employment, then that would be considered wholly separate. And, you know, that, that could definitely cause a conflict. But Councilmember McCandless is in a different position. And because it's so broad under this conflict definition, that's, that's a problem. So, what's the solution? Narrow the, narrow the definition or remove that, remove that, uh, idea, uh, completely or narrow it significantly.
But I think you're, you're, where we said directly, I think perhaps that solves it.
You can't do directly, because you can do indirectly. What if, what if your lovely husband would happen to maintain a benefit somehow? Or, uh, you know, there, there's too, there are too many variables. Your fears is, uh, you know, participates in lots of other community organizations. John Perkins' wife is very active in the community. Lots of us have many other, uh, you know, collateral interests in the community. That's the problem directly or indirectly. It's, it's just broad. It's the broad nature of it, which is...
So, so let me clarify. If we, on section A, we change the language to say, "The city official or employee shall not take any official action that is likely to directly affect the economic interest of an entity for which the city official serves as an official or director in any other decision or policymaking position." That we're directly to the organization and not to anything related to the category of the organization.
The economic interest, I mean, you understand how broad that is?
I do.
That's the problem. Until you fix that problem, that's the problem.
But this is where perfect is the endgame. So, and, and maybe that's not reasonable, because this is a binding document and...
I'm just saying, the concept of, "Shall not take any action that affects any economic interest of a person," is a, gonna be incredibly, incredibly hard target to hit, no matter how much you care about it. Mr. Culver may have a separate idea. He may think I'm, you think I'm thinking of this too much. I may be lost in the middle of the night. Well, I, in concept, I can see, though, somewhere in the road, a different council where we don't quite get along so well. That has happened here in the somewhat recent past. I don't know if Councilmember Steinmeyer or members of that have a memory of that. There's a chance that one or two of us might have had an issue with the one or two others, and we might have used something like that against each other. So, I'm just saying. What do you think, Mr. Culver?
Let me ask, does it not come back to the remedy? Right? So, say we don't get along, you're frustrated that I voted on tourism when I'm on the Truman Library Board, then that would go into the Board of Ethics for their consideration. They would say, "This is not a conflict," and then they give the ruling.
Right, and you get to spend the next fifty-two weeks in front of the Board of Ethics, weekly.
I mean, I agree with both, both of you were saying. I mean, yet, yes, there is, there's room for interpretation, uh, in there. Again, you know, it's, it's going to be difficult to have a document, I mean, that doesn't have that open to interpretation. So, again, that's how, it's up to you all how, what your comfort level is. Uh, yes, the remedies are there. Again, the idea is how, how easily do we want, you know, we're gonna want that bar to be so that someone, is it really clear that, that it's a, it's a conflict or not? Or if it's not, then, you know, we're gonna take the general remedies? That's, that's a view. We don't, those are where we get into policy decisions, and that's a, a view of the side.
Yeah, I think it's also material. What I mean by that is that, is a decision is so material that it would be broad from the level of concern of a conflict. And that can really, that's hard to regulate in the document, from my perspective. You can correct me if I'm wrong, or, or see it from a different perspective. Because you're an attorney, I'm not. But let's say that something did come out, and they go to the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission can either accept it and say, "Yes, it's a material conflict," or they can say, "No, thank you very much for applying, but we're rejecting this offer." So that you get away from that frivolous, those frivolous implications of making those applications. But the other side of the question too, when you file that application on this document, when you're filing that document, you're filing it, you're basically saying, "I'm willing to accept, uh, the accusation of perjury by saying, this is, you know, this didn't happen." So, what's your thoughts, Mr. Culver? Or should we talk offline on it, or what's your thoughts?
No, 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 I don't think we should talk. And I'm not that overly frustrated by it at all. I, um, it's a fact that what Mr. Culver said, it's a, it's a, it's where he set the bar. Economic interest, in my opinion, applies to almost everything we do. And setting the bar that low is troublesome, just in general. That's my, that's my belief. That would be my take on this, on this, uh, said, the...
So, should it be more refined to, because I'm hearing you say it's from a broad perspective. Would it be better to say your personal individual interest?
It would, it would be better to, to somehow limit it to that, that person or that person's holdings, ownership, that person's individual, uh, pecuniary interest. Some, some very, I don't wanna say direct, because your husband or your wife or your spouse or your children can also, your household, it can also be a direct benefit to you. Your investments, your closely held, held season, no one knows about. There's, there's all kinds of ways to directly or indirectly, but, but also financially benefit. You know, your company you work for, contract, you know, that kind of thing. So, it, it's, it's, any rule is easy to get around. And you can't, you can't legislate your way out of every problem. But, but I feel like if, if there's gonna be a rule on you can't take an action that, that is gonna affect you economically, uh, there's, there's, you've got to be some, um, better definition, you know?
So, should we ask Mr. Culver to come up with a better definition, bring it back to the body?
Uh, yeah, I like that idea a lot.
Yeah, I know it made it extremely easy for you here, Mr. Culver.
I'll see what I can do.
All right, thank you.
And, uh, I'm, I'm for the idea that we should not be voting on things that make us money. Obviously, you, you, you and I are fat discussion.
You're, you're lockstep, right?
We don't have locks, there's not any question. There's no question, you don't want feelings on that. That's not the issue. The issue is, uh, how do we do it without just running into a buzzsaw, uh, once a couple of people get up here that really dislike each other?
Right.
And frankly, end up with putting things on the agenda, you know, you'll end up with things on the agenda that get there with the, just the flat intent to do this to each other. Because that'll happen, that will happen.
Right, that's something.
And, and one more thing is also, you know, because we're talking about this as an ordinance, was to prevent the councils down the road from changing it to something with less T, more T, eliminate it altogether. I mean, ethics, ethics, I think, should be enshrined in any charter language.
And I think you made a great point. I had a friend of mine I was talking to about this, and he said, "Once you get it passed by the council, is then, when an election arises, vote to amend the charter and add to it." And that was a discussion they had of that. So, they may have already been thinking what you were thinking, Councilmember. All right, any other further questions on that? Does that take us to page eight then? Is that correct? Uh, the first section is, so Councilmember General Rule, Mr. Culver, on 116004, section A, General Rule, struck, stricken? Is it stricken or struck? Was it, uh... Removed? Thank you very much. That is, that's how you conjugated it. It's not stricken, it's removed. That's how you conjugate that verb. So, anyway.
I'm sorry, third question.
Yeah, just, A was struck, you know, struck out.
Yes, and, and some of, you know, that, some of these are just semantics where, where we thought it...
Would flow easier?
We thought it flowed better and made, it made more clear. But, yeah, so that's what some of this is. It's, again, if your document, you will want something different, then that's no problem at all.
Um, under B, I'm not the greatest speller in the world, the following will apply. And you just struck out the Y. Okay, thank you. My eyes were bad. So, it makes sense, thank you. Councilmember McCandless, 11604, item B, section 2, reciprocal favors.
So, currently, this reads reciprocal favors. A city official or employee may not enter into an agreement or understanding with any other person if that action by the official or the employee would be reported or reciprocated by that person directly or indirectly. My question is, should that explicitly say, including votes? Or is that implied? You know, I think, obviously, in council member behavior, this is one that you would want to be decidedly clear on.
I, let me ask, I'd like to throw this out there. Mr. Culver, do we even need to say, "Enter into an agreement or understanding"? How about just "May not do that thing"? I don't know why we need an intent portion of that at all.
So...
What do you think?
So, how would, then, how would that be?
It would just be that you may not, uh, may not, uh, trade, you know? May not, may not trade one act for another. That no good proclaus, right?
I, I mean, if, that, I mean, I would say that's what it says now. If you all want different language, then I would say something else.
I just didn't, I just didn't wanna add an extra element to it if it was not, if we didn't need to. In other words, if somebody could present, present a defense, defense that says, "We had an agreement, we had an understanding. Prove why I talked to that person and agreed to trade that thing for that thing."
I mean, I see what you're saying. I, I guess, it, it could be worded differently. I don't think we can just take out, I, I don't think it would be clear if we just removed the part about entering into an agreement or understanding.
Gotcha.
I, I think, I don't believe that would clearly...
May not trade one thing of value for another.
True, I mean, again, there's other, there's other ways to say it, so...
They're, they're theoretically two different things. Somebody could enter into an agreement to trade one thing and not be successful, much like, you know, intending to complete a conspiracy and not completing it. You know, those are two separate things. I don't know if, you know, an attempt, an attempt to follow through with a trade or actually completing it are two different things.
I mean, I think the, well, we, alternative, I'm not claiming that you all want. I, I mean, to, you, I know you got, I mean, or, if you've got something right now, I'll take that.
I don't care what it says. I want it to be crystal clear that you don't get to trade things for votes.
I think it could be written a little more clear. I don't have a symbol necessarily. I think it's a little bit worrisome.
And if you, if...
I think, I think it could be attempted. I think, I think it probably should include doing it. Maybe they can, they can, or, and, or attempting to, following, completing the act or attempting to complete the act. If that makes sense. You know, you, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I understand.
Yeah.
And are you wanting it, I mean, I would say currently, it implies votes. Do you want it to explicitly say votes or, do we really obligation this to be?
Yeah, I think you can. You can say, "Including," but not limited to...
Sure.
The act of voting by a official.
Because what you're, what you're looking at, or, uh, Councilmember McCandless, is situations where, you're working with someone, and they say, "Hey, if you vote on this, I'll give you that." That kind of very, very explicit language of, you might get monetary value, or you might get...
Yeah, like, here's your $500 if you vote yes on, on this, on Fashion Square.
I don't know many specific examples, but...
I do. Happened about 1989.
Okay.
Few people have heard of that one.
But that would, but that's what you're talking about? Or, 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 Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, repeat that, or to death. Page nine and Section 11605. Tweet, and, and I don't think you just even need this. I just asked this as a question. Should we be very specific or just anything of greater than $10 of value? Because I like what this represents, excuse me, Councilmember McCandless said, $10 of value. So that just takes that section out, that question I asked.
Take that one and two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we've done the amounts, actually, that, if I'm correct, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, those three sections or those three questions that Councilmember McCandless and I both had can be struck. And we can finish page nine unless anybody else has anything else on page nine. Okay, going to page 10. And I just asked this question, I'm sure this is relevant, Mr. Coper. You're not going to embarrass me if you say, "I don't think we need it." But, uh, should we give any examples of this with regards to that? Or is that just, I'm asking for too much explanation? Because I really just think every section should have a, a simple example of what a conflict of interest means or in plain English. But I'm not sure if that, this document needs that much work. We did not.
I would think, I would think you would typically have a document that you would have an example of each section.
I'm going to strike that, so. Councilmember McCandless, you have 11607.
So, this one talks about, um, the representation of private interests before the city. That if there is, let me make sure I'm on the correct part. That if someone breaks those private interests before the city, then they no longer are eligible to work with the city. And I just wasn't sure how long that was. Is that the correct section? Uh, this comes up later in the document. Yeah, I think, I'm going to hold that thought because I think it's, you know, later in the document that they would be banned from working with the city. And my question was, is it forever or not?
If I remember, the document is a two-year cycle. So, I can, for example, if an elected official, the document, it's later on that, elected official, then you want to be city manager. You have to be off the council for two years or to be city manager.
I was confusing this with a different section where it was a time.
Right.
Yep, yep, that's it.
Okay, no, great clarification. And I want to pass on my question on C. Because I've talked to him, I'm struggling about that. He says, "Your question is really not relevant," so forgive me on that. Okay, Councilmember McCandless, 1160.
Just, um, we don't have the time to find it. Section 1.16.07. So, is there a timeframe for which people can leave city employee and then come back?
There, there is. Those are outlined in, I, they're at least outlined in Missouri Constitution. I, I, I don't believe that the city charter gets into that level of detail, as I can recall. So, uh, but there are, but, but yeah, in, but in state law, there are specific time periods. It depends on the position. So, it, it's not set, you know, it's not a set period for everyone. It depends on what position you're coming from and, and, and the, as far as what position you held in the public life.
So, can you make some recommendations for what we think that should be? Either we follow RMSO X, Y, Z, or?
Yeah.
People are in management positions, they should represent before the city council within one year or two years?
Yes, we can add that.
Thank you.
That's all right, I'm going from here.
Okay.
What's the, uh, were we doing C on that one? No, we did, uh, 1.16.08, council member.
Okay, so.
Or do we just finish that one on page eleven?
No. So, the question, the way it's written, "A city official or employee shall not solicit, accept, or engage in concurrent outside employment which could reasonably be expected to impair their independence of judgment in or faithful performance of the official or employee's duties." What if I have a job before I come here and am elected as mayor that could have a conflict? Do I have to give up my employment? I understand that once I'm elected, I can't accept those positions. But what about employment coming into the position?
Well, it says currently, in, not, not my words, it says engage in concurrent outside employment. So, I would say it doesn't, according to this, it doesn't make any difference if you had it before you got here or not. Because it's not, you're not accepting it, but you are engaging it. So, I would say that even if you had it before you got left office, that that would still potentially be a conflict.
So, I am a lobbyist and I am a lobbyist for a company that we do business with. And that's my full-time employment and then I get elected.
Now, the more you're not.
Now, conflict, yes. Or let's say I own the lawn moving business that the city contracts with. Right, I just think it needs to be clear that you can't carry forward things that put you in conflict with your responsibilities of the elected official.
I trust, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Please, you see?
I actually have just a problem with that conflicting outside employment section anyway. Because I just don't know how we determine it. I mean, I guess I, maybe I kind of understand the lobbyist argument, but I can't really think of any other job or. I mean, you could, somebody, did they give any examples in these meetings of a job that where if you worked it, you couldn't run for office or couldn't serve on the city council?
I, I, I wasn't at all of their meetings. I don't specifically recall any examples on this section.
But if you're a firefighter, you can't be voting on raises for the firefighters. I mean, I, I can see where there are.
Well, I mean, if you, if, I mean, if you're a firefighter, independent, you couldn't serve on city council. There's other things that address that, or they're in a better city council. But, I mean, if you're a, I mean, you know, I, for example, I'm a police officer, you know, in a jurisdiction in Lafayette County, but I go on stuff for our police department all the time. I don't think that's a conflict. I don't know, I think you just have a hard time saying what's conflicting outside. I mean, I understand that if you personally vote as a conflict, you should recuse yourself. But I just think you have a hard time saying what's conflicting outside employment or the point where somebody can't run just, just because, you know, somebody does business with the city. I mean, that's just, you should just recuse them. I don't think you would say they can't run for the office or even serve on the city council.
What's your thoughts, Mr. Coper?
If we, I mean, I'm hearing the, the dialogue, I'm going to throw out this as a possibility. If we had at the end of the sentence, "Directly related to the city." So, we would read, "A city official or employee shall not solicit, accept, or engage in concurrent outside employment which could reasonably be expected to impair independence of judgment in or faithful performance of the officials or employees' duties directly related to the city." The idea that we're just.